And will be on the 17th. So. That is coming up. So we can move into the administrative reports. Is Mr. Kozinian with us virtually?
I'm here, yeah. Can you hear me?
Tell me you can hear now.
I can, I can hear. Can you guys hear me?
Can you talk?
Yeah, I'm talking. Can you guys hear me?
If anybody pays attention to detail, it's Steve Kozinian. He has been so specific as far as how practices are held, busing for athletic events, procedures with the students. The one, you can get that sense from talking with parents or students or Steve that that the student athletes are doing everything they possibly to preserve the fall sports season and they are taking it very seriously and working hard. And so today, just watching, you know, tennis benches out there and then watching the cross-country kids, the football kids and the soccer kids.
Cool, sir.
Boy, I mean.
Can you hear me?
They really want.
Can you hear me now?
They're not doing anything to jeopardize that.
Chris, I can hear my.
Go ahead and put on your ears. I can't.
Steve, can you hear me?
I can, I can hear everybody and I've been told that some people can hear me. Can you hear me there?
Yes.
Okay. I guess the main thing that I would kind of address for the athletics update is we'll host our first home event on Thursday with soccer. Based on our numbers last year and we had a really good team and so we had pretty good crowds. I don't foresee us over 100 people, so we're not really limiting the crowd spectators for our outdoor events. We have a football scrimmage the next night on the 18th and that's a scrimmage. So again, we don't think that'll be well attended for volleyball. We've got pretty strict protocols in place and where JV1 and JV2 will be playing in the upper and lower gyms. They're allowed two parents each for that, for, for a player. And then as soon as those contests are done, we'll clear the gym, make sure everybody's out and then we'll allow the varsity parents to come in. Varsity players, because that's primarily juniors and seniors. We will allow them to, the visiting team, to have some of their parents there. They will get two each. Where our varsity players will get four parents each. And then we will not allow visiting spectators for JV1 and JV2 volleyball games. Our next home football game isn't until October 16th. So we have a long ways to go from the 18th to the 16th for a home football game, just the way our schedule worked out. But, you know, originally we said we weren't going to be limiting spectators, but just with what we've gone through at the high school with contact tracing, I, I think that we are probably going to have to limit in some capacity.
Are there any questions? Very young. Thank you very much. The next administrative report. Ms. Rockford, Director of Business Services.
Thank you. Just to highlight a couple of things that have been happening in the business office. We are reaching the end of our, we've reached the end of our fiscal year and you know, we had our audits. So we have now submitted to the DPI our annual report, the special ed report, and a school level report, which are three different finance reports that are due by the end of this month. So all of them have been submitted. This Friday is the third Friday enrollment date. So this is one of those big dates where we're, you know, fingers crossed and, you know, we do the enrollment and that number is used to calculate our equalized aid and our revenue limit. So that's a big day. Tonya and I worked, met with the private schools, the two private schools in our district about the CARES Act. And that's a grant, as a whole, we're getting over $70,000, but part of it has to be distributed to the private schools. So right now our allocation for our district is $56,683. And we've been using those funds for protective equipment, you know, masks, shields, gloves, you know, things like that. We used it for some assistive technology with like cameras and microphones for our teachers. So they're able to provide virtual lessons. And as well as we use some of the money to purchase Probooks so that we have them available. They're not here yet because there's a backlog on Probooks because of COVID virus. But those would be available there for our students that we need more students to go to wanted ones. So if we are 100% virtual. And then we've also used some of the money for cleaning equipment for our custodian. So that's on that act. I just wanted to also share with you our food service program. We found out August 31st that we could apply for the SEMA summer option component for our food service program. And so starting last Tuesday, we are able to provide free breakfast and free lunches to our students and to the youth in the community, 18 and under. We have been, so it's kind of, it's nice option. So our students right now, we're not charging them for breakfast or lunch, which I've never encountered before. That's really nice. And then we also do have the option, if you're a virtual parent, that you can come on Tuesdays and Thursdays to get meals. So on Tuesdays, you get two breakfasts and two lunches per child. Thursdays, you get three breakfasts and three lunches per child. So we do accommodate five meals for the week, but they're only available on the two days. So yeah, so we process the paperwork to be able to participate in that SEMA summer option and see if that's a go. And that's the same program we were in, in March through the month of June. And then I also wanted to highlight summer school. The secretary for that program is still finalizing the numbers. But we were at 21 and there's a couple of courses that still need to be entered. And when I did the revenue on that worksheet, we had estimated 22. So we're in the ballpark and that's what we talked about when we met with you. I don't know how many, you know, back in June or May about how summer school would work and that enrollment would be down, but we're going to try to offer as much as we can. When made, our summer school director had talked about it. And then I don't have a cloud edit, but again, our third Friday data is pretty close in line with what I had estimated too for the revenue. So we will share that information to you later next month when we know all about.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Rockford? Okay, the next report is from Dr. Olson.
So we made it through our first two weeks of school, even though it was very rainy, but it was funny after driving, you know, into work for the last couple of months, you know, you could tell that first day is both behind the bus all the way to another country. Like, it's a good feeling. Normally I haven't complained about this, but I love it right now. And it was just so great to walk on that first day. Megan and I pretty much spent most of the day walking through all the buildings and in the classrooms. And Megan was with me to take pictures for our social media and website. But just seeing all those kiddos in there selecting books or even the first thing in school to read and just watching teachers go through the procedures, it felt really nice. Our teachers have just gone above and beyond the plan for things that they don't teach during college. And had a brainstorm, things that are way outside their comfort zone. I was amazed with the creativity of, you know, whether it's a spot on the floor so they know where their social distance spot is. Or, you know, at the middle school, watching them use a restroom because they had all the lights at the restroom so they would take their elbow, pop on a light so you could see how many kids were in the restroom that are popping off when they came back. Oh, that I did not know they were doing. Just really unique things. We have a tent out the back of the high school here for outdoor classes, outdoor lunches, basically any excuse to get kids outdoors. So I mean, really everybody is just giving it their all to make the beginning of the year a success. So kudos to our staff. One quick shout out was to our teachers at the high school as well that got the link through up and started. And their report showed that 143 new students that are coming into the high school this year, the link through leaders made connections with 127 of them. So I mean, even our students are really just going above and beyond and making the new kids feel welcome and make those transitions from fourth grade to the fifth grade easy and then eighth grade into the freshman year as soon as possible. Normally, our beginning of the year is also a time that we talk about our employee annual recognition. And as Megan and I were kind of talking and I think it came to me because we ended those our years of service awards during in-service, which all go backwards to me because oh, Am strike was one of them who had retired and then, you know, we had a hunter down with their per years of service awards and a few others that had retired, you know, or sometimes people, you know, had left the district. And we thought, would it be nicer to do those years of service awards at the end of the year during our last in-service date, that last day's school, doing it with the rest of the staff, whether they're going to lunch it or whatnot, but being able to make that a little bit more of a, I guess, memorable time. But we're also talking about at the board level, when would you like to recognize those years of service? So once again, we've got a couple of people that, you know, have been tired normally. That would be at October, correct, that wouldn't be to do that. Which we can still do this year, but I'm wondering if we do kind of a double duty of recognizing at the board meeting at October, the last year's years of service, but then maybe planning forward to April, May board meeting where it gets closer to the end of this year and then recognize this year's years of service when we're doing that. I think that would be side now, but just something we need to consider.
So if we pause until June, say, or May, those folks who already retired, it wouldn't make any difference because they would be retired now as well.
Well, too, we thought if we did this October at for last year's years of service, then they would still come in. But this year, like saying you are 20 or 20 this year, we'd recognize them in April or May. This year instead of waiting till the following October to recognize their years of service. And that way they'd be recognized in the year that they got it, especially in the case that they did, you know, retire from the district, you wouldn't necessarily be bringing it back. Just the thought. So we do in October need to recognize the folks that we have listed below that are serving the 20, 25, 30, 40 year last year acknowledged. Who have years of service to make that. Okay, next, the very important, talking a little bit about strategic planning. And so as I was trying to write my district administrator goals, I was looking for, again, I was saying the board goals, looking for strategic planning. And I was over five, Anna Thompson, and she had pulled up the last official strategic plan that had been done in the district, which was in 2015. So usually a strategic plan could already work on three to five years, but four or five is probably a little bit more common. And so I thought, okay, we'll, we'll probably do it now that the landscape of education has changed so dramatically. This would probably be an appropriate time and I would maybe move to refocus on what our strategic plan, where we were strategically in the district. I've worked with a couple of different facilitators. I worked with student education, strategic planning, and a little bit with Joe Schrader and Joe within the local, really local since he was about. The highway is very good at facilitating that strategic planning process. So I reached out to him just to ask him what that would encompass. And he recommended, just with everything going on in the state of education, that we wait till after the new year, you know, maybe February-ish or somewhere in that time span and really have a cross-section of the community. So anywhere from 25 to 50 people, get a cross-section of the community, get input from our constituents and then design a strategic plan for that. He said in the past, he used, used the schedule a bunch of different dates, but that's hard to get everybody together. And so what he's found has worked well is to do a Friday, Saturday combination. We'll do two weekends in a row and then with a final culminating date. And that way you don't leave it sit for a month or six weeks and then try to come back and try to have everybody remember what you discussed that with that momentum. Everybody's there and committed and then you come up with that final plan. So we would use the SWOT analysis, which is pretty common for facility plans, which is looking at the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats in the district. We would perform the environmental scan. We look at strategic objectives. And I think the most important part of the strategic plan, which I think it's in the live district, is how are you progress monitoring that plan? So my full intention is when that plan is done, that it is up on the wall. We're living the strategic plan and then bringing to the board, you know, your three or four times a year monitoring our progress so that it's always in the forefront. We know if we're making progress or what kind of adjustments do we need to make in order to reach the goals. So really, we're living through an active plan. So we can talk more about that as well. Otherwise, I don't have another, let me say it's an action item, but it's something if we want to make that action item, if you want to go with Joe Schrader, you can schedule him and get the ball rolling on that. All right. And with that, district administrator goal. So that, it was interesting. It was a little trickier to write these only because usually my goals are so heavily focused on academic data. And I can look at them in an academic data void with not having any state testing last year, not having any final eye ready, you know, test results to work off of. So I was, I was combing through the district data and just looking, I thought overall. So I thought I would take this opportunity this, this first year almost to kind of set a baseline for myself in monitoring my actions in the district. So for this first time around, I kept them a little bit more on the general side. And normally I would have metrics to measure these, but what they said while creating a baseline, but went off the district goals that are on the website. So it's my teaching, learning and achievement. So really still looking at student growth. And so this year really looking at how, how do our instruction and intervention and assessments all align together? Do we have the right people in the right place? Do we have interventions where we need to have them? What are some of our gaps? What are some of our strengths and achievements? And then really trying to look at staff development at the same time. It's a conversation I had often with Amanda already. Just because with the in-service days, you know, the schools do really schedule their own in-services and I'd like to start pulling that together in the district line focus. A little bit more along with that embracing the village philosophy. So external communication, community service and relationships and staff communication and engagement. You saw me doing, making some of those changes. So sending a staff newsletter two Tuesdays a month, one will be tomorrow. So always following the board meeting with board updates. And then two weeks following just with what is going on in the district, whatever. It has to do with our insurance plan, wellness, just keeping them updated without sending staff random emails all the time because, you know, it's hard to keep track of things. Maybe it's just emails from everybody. And then also moving into the external communications, formalizing newsletters with our families in the district. We also using this more for that and we will continue to do that approximately once a month and communicate with our families, but also looking at ways to build two-way communication. So trying to obtain feedback back from the community as well. And then being part of the community service, so already joined board research, building relationships. Built a relationship with Sarah at the papers, did a phenomenal job reporting on us, but the branching out even further more from that. And then operations and resource management. So really our big one, I mean, facilities are well underway, taken care of. But technology, working with Chris, what else do we need to do working towards possible one-on-one initiative? Looking at devices. I know he's getting a help desk ticket. So how can we branch out the district leadership for technology? How our teachers take us to those leadership positions, especially now with teaching virtually. Chris can't do it all and be the problem solver for everybody. So we'll be, like Chris didn't really try to tell you this, but starting at that technology committee here pretty soon, we're working side by side with you to help solve and have a plan in place to take us into the future of virtual learning because even if COVID goes away, this virtual learning platform is here to stay. So just really continuing to work on that. So that's kind of like a high-level overview. In the future, I will have metrics that I will provide to you and I'll be reporting on those metrics as well. I will, I will actually start some of those with the communication when I'll send out some quick three-question surveys to just get feedback from families and those staff as far as self-communication. See if there's things that I can differentiate to improve that. Lastly, just quickly, the revised school calendar, you possibly be taking action on that tonight. That just reflects the changes that we made to the school start dates and then also to the parent teacher preferences at the high school and the end of the first quarter. And with the district flexibility application, we'll be applying for that waiver in instructional minutes due to that. But there'll be several other waivers that will be asked for some flexibility on. I was going to bring that earlier, but we actually have a statewide meeting tomorrow afternoon to look at the district flexibility application. They're actually going to be working on some of that, which is at state levels. So we're joining the district in the 5th of September. So we'll be working through that as superintendents. So no, there is no rush on that. It'll be probably closer to November. We'll schedule a special board hearing. Okay. So quickly, just the message I came by, I think you all sent an email from the organization. And so they are looking at the community-wide initiative called Keep COVID Felt. And they are looking out, they're looking for school boards endorsements of this initiative. So that was one thing that I didn't answer. Endorsing that. So we rounded that with a few other organizations.
So does that need a formal action?
I, I don't think that needs a formal. Unless you are, you know, opposed to that or you want a special.
So we are supportive of that. Okay, the next title will be the input. You have anyone to sign up?
Thank you. We have two people. So Andrea is the first speaker tonight.
Hi, I'm Andrea Graham, fourth phone in purple. I kind of mumbled a little bit of that, so I'll try to be loud and clear. I'm here today to actually develop and conduct the survey of our students, students and families to better understand the climate of the school district. We have had a tough few months in our community. There have been topics and events that have brought common ground understanding, but there have also been events that have divided our community. Events happening in our state and nation have brought out passionate debates and unfortunately also bullying and hatred. The school district, in my opinion, is the exciting thread that runs through our community. We are all affected by the education, by the education the school district provides our students. Given this role in our community, we have the opportunity and the responsibility to unite and lead by example. While there are many complex dynamics and considerations at play, we all benefit from supporting our teachers, students and families. I expect you would not be here without offering that support. But our teachers, students and families need to hear that support more vocally in the meantime. While states that support can help, there is still more to be done to ensure the community has a culture resilient enough to carry on and succeed in the face of new challenges. I worry that in these divisive times, not all those are being heard. We are hearing from people who feel comfortable speaking out and sharing opinions. However, this is only a fraction of the families, teachers and community members. As much as we like to think we are sharing a common idea or goal, that may not be the case. We are a very diverse community with many, many needs, wants and ideas. In order to hear the voices of all stakeholders, we must conduct a climate survey of all staff, students and families. We cannot allow loud voices to drown out thoughts and feelings of our whole community. We must make it a priority to hear the good, the bad and the ugly from all stakeholders. Climate survey is a tool already used by other school districts to touch base with all school holders once per year. Conducting this survey will allow us to hear all voices and accurate data about how our district is serving its people. I urge you to discuss and plan for developing and implementing a climate survey to begin by the end of this year 2020. It is a place we can all start to gather real and relevant information to help guide our district leaders to talk. All teachers, children, parents and families, students to have their voice heard.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Megan Appel here, type in my address, 290 O'Neil Street. And I'm also prepared to request the same thing that Andrea was just requesting a climate survey. Right now, I've been with Mills for just over six years and I can't say it until, until this moment. I never really noticed much of a division, but it's become very apparent this summer that people have a lot of really strong feelings right now and as Andrea is proud. It seems that only people who are willing to speak out are the ones that are being heard. And we both have worked for a school that's been having some kind of surveys. Right now seems the time that it is urgent that we do this kind of survey. If we can send surveys to families saying, are you willing to send your child into instruction during holidays? And send children to this, asking them about how they feel about having this out on spring? We can certainly send them a survey asking, how are you feeling in the school environment? And the same thing for teachers and families. It is evident that the importance of hearing all voices at the table. And that means having them available in all home languages. And it's also something that is nonparticular, simply asking everybody to share how they are feeling. It's not write a blog or that. It's simply giving everybody the voice that they have to share of best to the district. And the data that we've got is able to inform professional development and instruction and even to use practices at a classroom level. And I think if we make a decision to do something like this now, we're showing people in the community that they're having a platform to share. And it can be used, the data can be used as a base for planning and moving forward in the right way rather than staying in this turmoil. So I also want to thank all of you for your time, effort, and I appreciate the work that you put into the difficult decisions around. the difficult decisions around COVID and pandemic factors and everything. But it seems just as urgent to address some of the social justice issues that have come up in this community.
Well, I wanted to respond, this goes back to my district administrator's report. It is part of strategic planning process. I think in the school perceptions, I didn't do a community survey in your own, but I did some, the pilots survey internally. And even though sometimes that's hard information to take, get that feedback. Going back to the metrics that I used to use for the strategic plan, it was very, very strong data. And you could see improvements or things, you know, went backwards a little bit. But it was, it was very, very honest feedback. We can give you school perceptions in the referendum and actually the construction referendum. But they do have a climate survey for the community-wide sort of staff. So, something I think, I think it leaves that maybe type of strategic planning or a bit more specifically, that might be some baseline data. And also for people that wouldn't necessarily participate in the strategic planning process, we also provide a little bit of a voice as well. So, that's one that I'll follow with that. I think I will start gathering some data. I was going to talk to Bill Foster this week. The survey is, which was developed quite often.
Okay. The next item is our consent agenda. Here are a number of items that we just highlighted. We have the August 10 regular Board of Education meeting minutes. 10 2020 Finance Committee proceedings. The August 19 2020 Special Board Meeting Minutes. The September 2 2020 Policy Committee meeting proceedings. The Treasurers Report, Pulchers and Invoices, the Personnel Report. And this is a condensed version, which includes retirements, resignations, hires, and letters of assignment. And we also have the revised district calendar, as Dr. Olson described in the report. Approval of the Oregon National Health Services. So, I want to ask if anyone would wish any of those items to be taken from the consent agenda in place of the regular action item agenda. Hearing that, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent. I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
Moving second here. Questions, your comments? Hearing that, we have a roll call, please, on the consent agenda motion.
Rondellini.
Amy Litzner.
I.
David Rado.
I.
Robert Superior.
I.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the Employee Handbook Addendum, which relates to pandemic workplace protocols. We had the first reading of that in our August 10 board meeting. So, I would entertain a motion for its approval.
I move the board approve the Employee Handbook Addendum concerning pandemic workplace protocol.
Move consecutive. Questions or comments?
Just have a quick question. It's more than specific. I probably should email you with this topic. But is this an item that only you two are still from?
Yes. The question is supposed to be, yes, please.
Yeah.
Okay. The motion is to approve the Employee Handbook Addendum. Any roll call, please.
Amy Litzner.
I.
David Rado.
Stan.
Rondellini.
I.
Robert Superior.
I.
Next item is approval of a line of credit. This was discussed in the Finance Committee. Perhaps this Dr. King delivers just a brief summary of that.
What I'm asking is the board approve a line of credit. A maximum we would borrow is $1 million. We've done this with the, we've had this procedure with the bank who had known for the last five years. Fortunately, the last four years for sure, we have not needed to borrow a lot of money. But it's there as a safeguard in case of some unforeseen circumstance with like state funding, for example. If things change per what's the plan. So, I'm asking that you approve this. The interest rate is 2%, and it would go into effect November 1st. It does not cost us any money unless we draw on the line of debt.
I would entertain the motion to approve the resolution.
I move the board approve the following resolution. Whereas pursuant to provisions of Section 67.128A1 of the Wisconsin statutes, a school board may borrow money as needed to meet the immediate expenses of operating and maintaining the public instruction in the school district during the current school year and in anticipation of taxes, state aid, income revenue, cash receipts, and other money to be received by the school district for the current year. The entire resolution will be part of the minute of this meeting.
Moving consecutive. Questions or comments? And again, this is really to take care of a cash flow situation or potential cash flow situation. So, we have a roll call, please.
David Rado.
Stan.
Rondellini.
I.
Amy Litzner.
I.
Robert Superior.
I.
Motion carries. The next item is the approval of gifts. And again, we have a very dangerous. So, we would entertain the motion for the approval of gifts.
I move the board accept the following gifts. Thank generous donors for the continued support of the students' programs in Lake Mills area school district. School supplies with an estimated value of over $100 from Lake Mills Arabian Church. School supplies with an estimated value of over $100 from the Jefferson County Workforce Development. Staff gift bags with an estimated value of over $100 from Cape and Community Partners. Forty usable cloth face masks valued at $200 from Miss Rachel Davis. A $200 donation to school lunch accounts from Power and Chris CrossFit Nutrition. Forty pairs of bombas and socks with an estimated value of $216 from the United Way of Jefferson in North Wallward Counties and a $1,000 grant from the Arts Alliance of Greater Lake Mills for the elementary music program to build instrument kits for students.
Moving consecutive. Questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Rondellini.
I'm Amy Litzner.
I.
David Rado.
I.
Robert Superior.
I.
Motion carries. The next item is discussion of any future agenda items for the upcoming board meeting.
You can see that we started a list there. Probably one of the bigger things is I will be working with the first boss tomorrow on the school event. So, I will have to come and make the presentation and listen to some of those. How we're going to monitor those throughout the, you know, how they're being activated.
Okay. Entertain a motion for a general. Seconded. All those in favor say hi.
I.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.